Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the April, uh, sorry, April, August 20th, '25 school committee meeting, the first or second meeting of the 25, the 2025 school year, sorry, I'll get through theirs. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation and in our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, welcome. The first thing that we have is to approve the August 20th agenda. Does anybody have any changes or additions to that? No? Nope, good, all right. Well, welcome. First, we'll start off with a welcome superintendent fail in. We'll start off with the superintendent's report.
Perfect. The superintendent's report tonight has a lot of data and it's going to be our operational kind of look at how we're starting school with some of the work over the summer and getting ready for the school year. And then we'll have a more academic presentation where we meet after Labor Day with the start of school related to our work with the leadership team and our first day with new teachers, et cetera. So, given that this was a data-heavy report, I decided to do it on PowerPoint so the data could be saved and posted on the website for our families at home. The school year is opening on next Wednesday. Our first slide, the overview of the week that we have been experiencing this week and next week. We had first-year teachers, our new teachers of the district, on Monday, the 18th, Tuesday, the 19th, and today, the 20th. We're very, very fortunate to have 17 new educators come to the Milton Public Schools. They had three full days with the mentoring program and our mentoring team of Unit A and Unit B staff, John Reddaw, Meredith Kemp, and Laura McDermott. I want to thank all the presenters that we had that day. We had Bill Fish present, Katie Blake presented, Laurie Dunn even stepped in for HR and presented. So, it was very much a full team of folks welcoming our new, new members who had a nice lunch on Monday afternoon. On August 19th, we had our full leadership retreat. We'll go into this in detail when we present at our next meeting in early September, but we really did a nice job of getting our leadership team together, finding out what their needs are, and fitting those needs and looking at some data into how we want to approach our work in the classroom that we're going to focus on this year. So, a lot more discussion will be happening about classroom instruction, how we're working with our paraprofessionals and our educators in the classroom, how we can support them in the classroom, and came up with some really great, five very sound priorities and themes for the coming year that we'll be putting in front of our educators on Monday when they return to school on the 25th. In the next slide, I want to thank everybody that worked so hard this summer. We had a great Milton Summer of Enrichment program, our ESY program at the high school and at the Cunningham Collycott. Very, very high participation for the calculus projects here at Milton High School, beyond the Bell program, Cam Cunningham and Cam Tucker. First year that we've had our after-school program running camp at the Tucker and the community responded with high numbers. It was a great program. We're very thankful to branch out and the work that they're doing in the community schools is fantastic and they had a great summer. Keep in mind, that group only takes one week off a year. They work all the way through this week. They take this one week off at community schools and they're right back at it next week. So, we thank the, the community schools for all their hard work, not only during the school year, over the summer, and we wish them a good week this week so they can be ready for the first day of school. All Milton Public School faculty and staff will report to their school buildings on Monday, August 25th. That's a little change from the past where they would come up to the high school and would have a first-day gathering of all the staff and the superintendent would speak and would have some guest speakers in order to welcome the group back. But given this year, we only have one professional day for this administrative work that we want to support and engage our educators in, in the, in their classrooms on Tuesday morning, and all Milton Public School faculty, staff, and students, K to 12, I'm sorry, that's 1 through 12, will start Wednesday, the 27th, and Thursday, the 28th, and there will be no school on Friday, the 29th. So, I apologize for the typo. It is grades 1 through 12 that start on Wednesday and have a second day Thursday. All kindergarten students report on the Tuesday after Labor Day. Some, you know, really big work being done this year over the summer. The Collycott-Cunningham Library Space Renovation Project is coming to a close this week. They came in and did a fantastic job. I'd like to thank Katie for being involved. Also, Holly Concannon and John Redden, Tom McCarthy, Bob Mayhew were all involved. We have expanded the footprint of the Milton Public Schools by 5,512 square feet. That includes six offices, three large breakout spaces, a large breakout space, three classrooms and one teacher's room. This is sorely needed space and I know that the school committee worked hard and the administration prior to me arriving worked hard to gain more space for the Milton Public Schools. And over the summer, this was completed. The work looks fantastic and we can't wait for the teachers and the students to see their new space at the Cunningham. This is phase one of the work. Phase two will happen in summer of '26 when they'll be expanding the attic space into the library use. And we will have a full working library next year at the Cunningham Collycott. This year, our librarian will be going class to class and also has his own space where students can come to him in order for their lessons to be uninterrupted during the school year this year. So, the service delivery will be the same. The other consolidated facilities update from Tom McCarthy is a long list of things that have been happening. If you are a baseball family, you saw the parking lot being repaved so you couldn't park there for a couple of games. We had the elevator fix at the Tucker. We've had some AC units replaced. We've had some painting in the auditorium here at the high school, repainting the floors in the auditorium. Lots of good work by all the capital funds that we have and some of the operating funds for the facilities department, all put to good use, making sure that the school buildings are in shape for the students and staff coming back. I want to thank Tom McCarthy, Bob Mayhew. And I actually want to take the time to thank our senior custodians who actually do a great job working not, not only to clean the buildings, but cleaning around summer programming and in some cases, cleaning it around summer construction. So, all the buildings are ready to go for staff next week and for students the following week. So, thank you to the facilities and custodial department. Just to give you a quick glimpse of the enrollment comparison for the end of last year and the start of this year, want to pause and say that this is not the official enrollment for the Milton Public Schools for the school year. That enrollment is taken by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed on October 1st of every year. It's called the October 1 report. We have to put all of our enrollment data in by October 1st and then Desi takes that snapshot. So, that's how we're measured for our enrollment, for any funding pieces that will come to us through the state. So, the enrollment is not a done picture right now, but it is a good thing to look at. As you look on the left-hand side, you have the '25, '26 as of today. That is our enrollment in pre-K all the way through grade 13. And keep in mind, grade 13 are the students who stay with us through their IEP service deliveries from 18 to 22. So, our enrollment for this school year at the moment is 4,373. Compared to at the end of last year, it was 4,363, a net new amount of students, of 10 students. A lot of in and out, as you can see on the right-hand side from the changes. I just want to let the public know and the committee know that that change is essentially the kindergarten coming in versus the kindergarten that's leaving. So, the change between cohorts of students, which is, would be a separate view of this, is actually if you look at the kindergarten in the '24, '25 column is 369 last year. Grade K, 369, '24, '25 school year. When you follow your eye down to the left and you look at grade 1 for '25, '26, it's 372. So, that cohort grew by three students. That's just another lens into how the, how the enrollment is moving through the district. So, we have a net number of 10. We have movement in and out of the district at every grade. And the reason why you see a minus 50 at that kindergarten is because the kindergarten class coming in is that much smaller than the one that just came in last year. So, just a good view of the preliminary data related to enrollment. And when we come to the October 1 date, we'll give the official enrollment out and we'll do another presentation at that time. Transportation is an issue that we've received calls about. There is concerns related to the, the added bus from last year that has been reduced for the budget purposes in this school year. So, we just wanted to be very clear with the data and show it to the public and what it looks like related to last year. This school year, '25, '26, as of August 13, total students registered is 1,465, whether you were later on time, the total is 1,465. The total students on the waitlist for on-time registrations is 84. The total students waitlisted who were late is 32. And the total amount on the waitlist is 1,16. When we compare that to the previous year where there was an extra bus, we had 1,466 riders, we had 26 waitlisted who are on-time registering, and we had 61 who were on the waitlist, who were late in their registration, in a total of 87. So, we are up with the amount of students on the waitlist. It's not a surprise because we're one bus less than we were last year. And, and I think the dialogue that we had at finance committee this morning around, you know, the brief history of how that bus came to being reduced, my short synopsis is, and folks at the table can please correct me, the school committee added a bus halfway through the year in order to address needs in waitlists. And the school committee then supported that for the FY '26 budget to keep not only that added bus, but an additional bus to increase, to decrease the waitlist even further. But as the budget process worked its way through, January, February, March, April, May, those two buses were not afforded in the budget. They were, the, the way that you all did your budget last year in terms of level service versus...
Needs.
Needs versus, yeah.
Need-based budget. The need-based budget had two buses in it, more than we have right now. And due to the fiscal concerns, not only was that second bus reduced, but the original bus was reduced. So, we're back to, two years ago, transportation bus level that had waitlists then and currently it has waitlists now. So, we understand the plight and the concern that that represents for the 116 families. This is mainly a Pearson High School issue because the state law says that we have to give rides to students on buses K to 6 who live more than two miles. But the law also states that we don't have an obligation to do it 7 through 12, although we make every effort to give everybody a bus who needs it where we can and how we can when the fiscal conditions are, are better than they are right now. Community schools update, again, Martha did a great job this summer, wanted to give some real good data on where we are with after-school. We are starting the school year at full capacity at the Collycott-Cunningham and Glover, 150 students each, in near-capacity at the Tucker, 130, and we have spots to fill, I think 10 available spots at the Tucker. We are still actively hiring due to staff departures and reduced availability. Current openings include group leaders, instructional aides, kindergarten educator, and a one assistant supervisor. So, this is an advertisement. If you are watching this show and you would like to work for the after-school program, Martha is an incredible leader. The hours are 3 to 6. And if you are watching this or you're, you're older, high school or college-age child is watching this, anybody in all people are welcome to apply. Your help would be appreciated and it's a great place with a great atmosphere and it could be a school right in your neighborhood that you could walk to. Enrollment waitlist for the current year at Collycott has 150 daily. There's 177 total enrolled, waived with varied schedules. We have 24 on the waitlist. The Cunningham has 150 capacity daily, 177 enrolled, 24 on the waitlist. And 12 were offered alternative attendance, meaning not full-time, but maybe separate two or three days a week. Glover has 150 spots available with 170 folks enrolled, 31 on the waitlist, and two are offered alternative attendance. Tucker has 130 daily spots, 140 total enrolled, no waitlist. Lottery trends compared to last year is a significant increase in grades 1 through 5 applicants. There was a decrease in K applicants at all sites except for Tucker, which saw an increase of 53%. And all lottery applicants were granted spots, all K lottery applicants granted spots. The demand in the increase by site, we have a 32% increase in demand at Collycott, 16% increase at Cunningham, 9% increase at Glover, and a 21, 27% increase at the Tucker. So, we will reevaluate. I think it will be a good time early this fall with Martha to evaluate, what is the impact of the lottery policy that we put in place, I think, last year? How has it changed the experience for our families? I had one conversation with a gentleman who was really worried because it's, it's a year-to-year experience for those folks. It used to be in the past that when you got in in K, you were okay all the way through. So, that felt like a good, consistent experience for those folks who were fortunate enough to get into kindergarten. However, the inconsistent experience for folks previously was those who were new to the district and they didn't have a chance to get into the after-school program. So, there was an equity access issue there. So, I'm assuming that the lottery was an opportunity to maybe try to open up that access annually. So, I think it might be helpful for us to look into that, see what, any mitigating issues that have come up that we might want to discuss later in the fall and then maybe report out on that. Lastly, reestablishment and residency, and I don't know why the slide came out like this, but it is what it is tonight. Reestablishment, remember now, we have asked every third-grade family, every sixth-grade family, and every ninth-grade family who is rising into those grades to reestablish their residency. Serena Burke has worked hard. I want to thank the high school office staff. And I want to let folks know that we brought back Marty McKenna, who was probably the most popular person in Milton Public Schools for the last 10 years, back these last two weeks to help get through these folders and communicate with families and make sure that everybody has an understanding of what they need to re-register for school this year. With all that work done and continuing to be done this week and next week, we have eight families who are currently at the high school working on submitting documents and we have 15 families who have not, who have not started the process. So, we have a total of 22 potential families who are out there getting ready to bring paperwork in and hopefully they do. Pierce Middle School has four families who are currently working on submitting documents and 18 families who have not started yet. Grade 3 families across the elementary school, six families are working on completing the process, four who have not started yet. Keep in mind that we have sent out four communications on this issue to every single family who is re-establishing. The most recent communication was on Monday morning. That communication states that if you don't have the material in by Friday, we may not be able to let your child start on time because we just might not be able to process the paperwork in that crunch period of just a few days. So, we're asking families for their patience. We ask them to please submit the document so we can process and have their child start as soon as possible and hopefully on time. But we want to make sure that we're letting folks know that that is not a punitive timeline. It's really about being able to process that last-minute rush of folders. So, we will be completing folders and getting back to people on a one-by-one basis so we can get as many folks to start school as possible. The registration of new students, we have 12 registering at Milton, Milton High School who are preregistered and not completed any forms. We have four families working on completing registration. Therefore, we have a total of 16 potential registrations still out there from Milton High School. At the Pierce, we have 11 families preregistered but have not completed the forms, two families who are actively working with staff on their registration packets, a total of 13 who are potentially registering at the middle school for the school year. And at the elementary level, 12 families have preregistered and have not done anything since that. Four families are in process with us working on their packet, a total of potentially 16 students prepared to enter the schools. I want to thank Serena Burke for her work on this and Brad Spindel, who also works on this. We have been hand-placing every single elementary student to make sure that they first have a, a chance to go to school in their resident district school. But also, if their, those school classrooms are full, we are moving folks to a school close to their home that has a better class size. So, the, the sheet that you will see for elementary schools should have a balanced set of class sizes across grades and across school. We feel class size is important. We don't want any school having a lopsided class size in either grade 1 or grade 5. So, we're balancing that for academic purposes for our students. And that is my superintendent's report. We'll post that information and data on the website with the school committee materials so folks can review it at their leisure as well.
I had one question or a comment. So, I know in addition to the waitlist for the transportation, I know that there have been questions about the routes. So, Katie, would that be, if there are concerns about routes or questions around that, would those emails go to you or who would those go to? Like, if, if something came up? But there's also, there's a Google Doc on the website, correct, under transportation, if there's an issue with the...
So, on the district website, under the transportation page, we have posted the routes. And then if any families have any concerns with the bus stop or any of the bus routes, there is a Google form that we're asking them to submit to provide us with the information so that we can look into their request and their inquiry and work with the bus company to see if we can make the modification or provide any of the updates. We're trying to do so and then provide the information to others that may be impacted because it could potentially change the route and the timing of the route. So, we're trying to do that as fast as we possibly can, just so everyone has that information before next Wednesday and the start of school.
Except there's a change in the route, would that be, would families be emailed?
Mm-hmm. So, what we do, the process that we currently do is we would update the documents that are posted on the website and then we would send an email to the families that are on that bus route if there was going to be any specific impact to their stop or if there was any specific impact or significant impact to the timing of the route. So, if, if we had to switch things around and the student's job went from the end of the route to the beginning of the route, we would send an email to those families to notify them so they know an appropriate time to be out at the bus stop.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I also want to thank Stephanie O'Keefe. We have, now have the ability to actually communicate directly with families by bus. So, if anything happens on a rainy day or a snowy day, we can actually, or a bus breaks down, we can communicate with those families directly by bus. So, I want to thank Stephanie for making that tool available and also thank Katie for the process of when that feedback comes in from our families that were actually, actually looking at it, taking it very seriously, moving it over to the bus company, and they are making changes based on that feedback. And the reason why the bus stops are different this year is because we have one less bus. So, they're kind of trying to make it work with one less bus. So, the stops have changed a little bit. So, Katie, thank you very much.
Of course. Great, thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Yeah, just, I really appreciate the presentation, walking through all these aspects. Hi. Couple of things that stick out to me. One, enrollment, last year was our second highest enrollment in Milton's history. This is projected to be higher than that, so we'll have a new second highest enrollment in Milton's history.
You're talking about the current first grade?
I'm talking about, oh, total.
Oh, total, gotcha.
Like, the highest ever was 2020. Since then, last year was the second highest. Now, if this surpasses it, it will be the new second highest ever. Unfortunately, that, it's good news that people want to come, rough news from a space perspective. I did want to re-highlight kind of the thing you hit on a bit, John, about the transportation steps because I thought like that is helpful just to go over again because I know you tried to cover it. You were not obviously here for that and so we did talk about a little bit in finance. But for anybody watching, last year, we had similar waitlists. We've had similar waitlists. We got the one-time funding from the select board, who is gracious enough to provide us funding for an additional bus. As we moved through the budget process, we identified the desire to try and eliminate the waitlist as like a priority for the district and included that in our needs-based budget request. And the conversations around the override, that needs-based budget with the select board quickly was kind of informed that that was not feasible. We went down to level service where we maintained the bus that we added last year. And then when the school department was asked to cut the budget for this year below level service, the $700,000 cut, it was at that point that we removed the additional bus that was added last year and to the point you made, John, of why we are at the bus capacity we were for the prior school year FY '24. Now, that's kind of the, the timeline of walking through. I think it, again, stinks that we are not able to support all the families who want space on the bus. And I, we knew that that was a need and a problem and tried to work through that with the budget process, but given the, the need to actually cut below services that we provided last year, I think that's where, where we landed of. We needed to cut things that were not mandated, given that the transportation, as you said, is not mandated for students above grade 6. So, that's something I just want to make sure we, we were clear on. I'm interested to hear, I didn't actually, for the lottery, for, and I'm kind of going through your slides as we did this, for the after-school program, my experience wasn't that it was like a Kinder Lottery. The thing we introduced the lottery for was because it used to be a first-come, first-serv. Like, if you got in, when the application window opened, the thing we're solving for, like, the application window opened at 5 o'clock on a, or 12 o'clock on a Tuesday. If you got in there from 12 o'clock to 12:05, you got a spot. If you got in there at 12:10, you were waitlisted. So, that was, that was the thing, the lottery was... So that was, that was the thing, the lottery was intended to address, was not have it be a first-come, first-served. I don't think we've given preference for prior enrollments even in the last few years, so it might have been a few years ago that that changed, and I'm not sure if any of us were around for that. But yeah, would always be interested in figuring out, as we've done, how we could further strengthen that program to, similar to the transportation, like how do we get people off those waitlists and provide more services that the community is requesting? So I appreciate all that, that context and the detailed context about registration, and that's just all very helpful and insightful data, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we think, is the rate-limiting factor on after-school enrollment about space? Or is it also about, I'm just noting how many people there are still hiring?
So after meeting with folks, it's about space, it's also about quality staffing, hiring those staffing, hiring those staff, training those staff, quality programming, quality ratios, and also making sure that we, because we are open to any student who wants to come, some students may come with other needs that we need to provide support for. All of those factors are why the growth and the scaling up of it needs to be done thoughtfully. It's not about just, let's get another room and see if we can hire some more folks. It is a very well-run program. It's not just babysitting. There's some good work going on with those young people, and it needs to be done in a way that's safe and high-quality, and we want to make sure folks can be trained. So I'll be meeting probably at the end of September to think about how we can, you know, set some goals that we might want to approach over the next few years for increasing capacity, but it would have to meet the conditions of all those things being done at a high level.
I think we did increase capacity last year, and then obviously just continuing this year, but the demand increased, those percentages you shared are shocking.
Yeah, canceled out, canceled out what should have been a helpful increase in capacities, just like a net, continuing to not meet the demand, yeah.
Yeah, I think Martha does a wonderful job. She interacts with Katie very well, and the principals very well, and it will, we'll be monitoring our ability to scale up over time, and we'll be probably coming out in November with some summary statements about where we are and what we want to do moving forward.
If I can just speak to kind of the financial piece. So community schools is a self-sustaining program, meaning that the revenue or the fees that we're charging our families, that is the revenue that we use to support the program. And as a part of the expansion of the enrollment numbers that we overtook over the last several years, we also made some modifications to the pay scales, so that we could really try to recruit and retain and hire employees to be able to staff the programs. And I think as we look at the next three to five years, and just talking about the scaling and the additions, we also just have to be mindful of some of the changes that have happened in the past, and just ensuring that we continue to ensure that it is a self-sustaining program. And so when we look at some of the financials over the past year, just in the future, we'll just have to make sure that right now we're expending more money than we're actually bringing in for revenue. And so if we continue to just try to increase capacity and hire at the rate that we've done, it may impact our ability to remain a self-sustaining program. So I just wanted to mention that from the financial side, because I know at one time we had a significant balance in that account, and that's just no longer the case. So just another consideration for the program.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Because it's the new year, and I still have summer brain, I completely forgot, so just to speak. So do we have anybody online who's here for Assistant Speaker? If so, if you could raise your hand. Nobody in the audience here?
No hands.
All right, we will skip Assistant Speaker, great. Next is the chair's report, so I have two things under this. One is, the first is the update on the school committee retreat. We had that school committee retreat on August 6th. John joined us, as did Katie Blake, and Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Carla Kosa, joined us as well, so it was great to meet her. It was her second day, so I think she had about eight hours under her belt, so it was great for her to come and join us. So the first half of the meeting, John, provided a number of the updates of things that he's been doing since he hit the ground running on June 1st. And then the latter half of the meeting is when we began to look at the school committee goals and begin to brainstorm around some of those. We got some work under that, some work on that, we definitely made some traction on it, we have more work to do in upcoming meetings. One of the things that we did address, and that again, we'd need to, we need to discuss in upcoming meetings, is the prospect of extending the superintendent's term for a second year, so not the interim superintendent's term. So talking to John about that, and talking about that as a school committee. There was a lot of discussion around that. I think many of us feel that, you know, there's been, there's been a lot of great work so far in a short amount of time. I think we've had a district that's had a lot of instability over the last five years, so having a second year with the same superintendent would be great and provide some stability to the district, especially given the budget challenges that we've had, and also, you know, I think we've all found, in addition to John's insight around the budget and his leadership, you know, his strategic vision's also been really, really appreciated. So one of the things that we talked about is having the MASC come and discuss sort of the pros and cons of that, of a two-year term, some of the things that we need to look at. They were not available to come now, so we're trying to get them in the next meeting or two, the beginning of the school year was busy, so I'm working on that piece. So if there are other questions that we have, and then similarly, I know that we're exploring some of the other challenges about getting the waiver and the possibility of moving that forward for a second year. So that was a, you know, that, because one of the goals would have been, or could be, the superintendent's search, it seemed like a good time to discuss that, so that we weren't dedicating a lot of time to what we were looking for in a search if the intent is to continue with a second year. So I don't know if anybody wanted to weigh in on that piece. We're going, we will be discussing it more in the next couple of meetings, but I think that there was a lot of, you know, healthy discussion around it. I think, you know, somebody made a really good point that in having you in this role and in things moving forward, it's almost like we're beginning to see, you give us insight into what we should be looking for in the next leader, and I think that that's really important. I think that leadership role that you are providing is important, and that you're, that that's giving us good context and good feedback as we do the search for the permanent position. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to add anything or discuss anything at this point? That will be a discussion moving forward. Again, there were other items that we talked about that we still need to flesh out, we have, just have a draft of those goals, and we'll work on those moving forward. We also discussed some of the objectives and topics that we want to focus on in the coming year. French immersion was one that came up, that we will begin to look at and schedule over the coming year. We also talked about looking back at, you know, at addressing the achievement gap and some of the information around that, and also looking at some of the ELA curriculum and the curriculum moving forward, so having presentations around those things. But again, we'll begin to, we'll continue to flesh that out as we move forward. But I think it was just a great opportunity for all of us to come together, kick off the year, really look back at what we achieved last year, and then begin to set the stage for the coming year. If anybody has anything else you want to add to that? Oh, for this?
After you finish yours, you might want to go back to the vote for this.
Oh, right, is that on there? Okay. Okay. So that was the update on the retreat. Again, we'll final, we'll look forward and finalize those objectives, our goals, moving forward. The one thing we have to do, we have a couple of votes to do, the first is we have to, if we can approve the meeting, the minutes for that school committee retreat, I don't know if everybody got to review those?
I'll make a motion, at least for the purpose of discussion, motion to approve the minutes of the Milton School Committee Retreat dated August 6th, 2025.
Second? All in favor? Great, it's approved. Great. So under the superintendent's report, there are a number of motions that we need to do to approve the student handbooks for the 2025-26 school year. So in the folder, we had the Milton High School Student and Family Handbook, the Pierce Middle School Student and Family Handbook, the Elementary Student and Family Handbook, the MPS Staff Handbook, and the Student-Athlete Handbook. Those are all in the folder as well. I think, as opposed to doing them as individual votes, I believe we could do them all as one vote.
Is, John, you might not know this, but obviously these are very long documents, lots of things. Do you know what, if anything, like substantial, has changed in any of these from last year? And I guess another thing I might flag is, would there be a way on an annual basis to almost have like a kind of?
Summary.
Summary of changes page at the start of it, to say like, hey, this year we updated this policy within the, because for families who have read through, and probably not a whole lot have read through every single policy, but families who are somewhat familiar with it, having at least that, forcing anybody to like figure out what we've changed on an annual basis, I think is just too much. So something that says like, oh, we updated this student access policy, then families know, okay, let me make sure I understand what that is, versus just rereading through the whole thing and hoping they remember what changed.
So that's a great idea, and we can implement that change for our next year's kickoff of the handbooks. The major change in the handbooks was the response to the Supreme Court case related to parents being able to opt out of a certain curriculum. That Supreme Court case did not provide any guidance to school districts across the country, so the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents teamed up with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and provided some guidance that was suggested to put into the handbooks. That information was reviewed by our council as well, and we provided that language in the handbook this year. So that was the only, from my understanding, the only major change from last year to this year.
I have, this is more of a procedural question. So within, if changes are made to each individual handbook, does it go through policy committee? Or is there, or are the changes made, who would make, recommend changes to the policy within each individual handbook if they were going to be made? Is that?
I think there's a difference between policy and the handbook. So any and all policy changes were, would be going through the school committee, policy subcommittee, and then the school committee, and I think we did some of that work in our retreat when we changed the Title IX policy and reverted back to the shift. So that would go through the school committee in the normal way. The handbooks are, because it's not a policy, it's handbook language, like it would be if we changed any language around any quota discipline or anything related to that. So there is no policy aspect of that. In this case, we took guidance from our attorney and the three agencies that we all worked with together, and we put the changes in that they recommended. So every year, we would put the handbook in front of you, into Mark's point, which is a good one, you know, a cover sheet saying, here's some of the changes we made from the principal of the high school, middle school, there could be disciplinary changes that we would want to focus on, make sure parents do, if there's any updated expectations. So when language like that changes, I think we should highlight it and bring it to the attention of the school committee and the public as part of this process.
Great, that's helpful. So just annually, does the, do the lawyers look at it?
They look at every, unfortunately for Charlene Roach, this is her main job in July and August, is making sure that we have the recent versions, we give them all to the attorney to review. If they have any legal things that they would like to see changed, they would let us know, and we'd bring that to the attention, and we'd make those changes. Most of the changes in the yearbook, I mean, in the handbooks year to year are the changes in names and titles of anybody that may be coming in and out of the staff related to the handbook, and so that that's the process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the following handbooks for 2025-26 school year. Milton High School Student and Family Handbook, Pierce Middle School Student and Family Handbook, Elementary Student and Family Handbook, MPS Staff Handbook, and Student-Athlete Handbook. One second.
All in favor? All right, I'm making sure I'm not forgetting anything, not a stellar first meeting, I apologize. We will now move to the finance subcommittee reports.
Great. We met this morning, we also met a couple weeks ago on the 6th. One of the big topics we have been discussing is, one of the things we've mentioned we were going to be doing when we were talking about the budget stuff last year, which is the quarter four closeouts, how FY '25 ended, and then the school departments worked to evaluate that against the FY '26 budget through what Katie has called kind of a recasting to make sure that we feel confident about where our budget, how our budget is constructed for the current fiscal year, and how that will meet the needs of the district based upon kind of how the fiscal picture closed out at the end of last year, and to highlight any places where we were over and have some concerns or have some updating kind of developments within costs related to supporting students, things like that. So obviously, we finished the year with an additional million-dollar request that was granted by town meeting and warrant committee, supported by warrant committee and the Select Board, which was fantastic. That was a slight increase from our original projection, 700. So all those things are factors that I think Katie and John have been looking at, and really appreciate John as a second set of kind of fresh eyes, bringing this to support, all the work that Katie's really helped lead us on to get there, and so I think the finance committee were able to share some plate ways in which they are, want to see some realignments within the FY '26 budget in order to support and strengthen certain line items within the school department's accounts, operating accounts, to ensure we have a strong and sound fiscal picture throughout this year. So really appreciate all that work, excited that we're having this conversation, you know, August and not in January, and love to turn it over for what you all want to share.
Thank you, Mark. I first want to just acknowledge and thank Katie Blake's ability to close out the FY ' '25 budget when the district was looking at a deficit of about $2.5 million, in her ability to pull the reins on the expenses, and really take a hard look at where the expenditures needed to be pulled back in freezing those expenditures and freezing the hiring, and working with this body of school committee members, as well as the warrant committee and the Select Board, and then with the end of the year, a successful transfer of funds from the Select Board, the warrant committees, and the school department. To be able to make up a $2.5 million deficit in five months is quite a feat. So I, first of all, want to thank everybody at the table for that, especially Katie. And then to have the town take the incredible measure of supporting the schools in the town with a $9.5 million override is an extraordinary feat, especially with the amount of votes that it got, and the consensus of the community to want to support the schools in the town. With all that being said, as we walk into FY '26, we're still, and in July, needing to go back and use funds in order to pay back in order to pay backwards to FY25 to close out those bills, and then identify the continued data points of what we budgeted over time and what our actual expenditures were, and noticing those data points over three years that there were just gaps in the budget between what was budgeted and what the actual expenditures were at the end of every year. So, we know that we asked the town for a big lift in getting an override. So, the town did their job. The community did their job. The other part of this is now our job to make sure that we can fiscally be responsible and steward those dollars in a way that our budget is solvent at the end of this year. And that means looking at the expense side of the budget. We have to look at how we spend our money, how our resources are deployed, and make sure that we have enough funds in the budget lines that we know are going to have actual expenditures that reach a certain amount. And the only way that we saw fit to be able to recalibrate and realign money within those lines in order to make sure that our utilities line had enough money, that our Unit D payroll had enough money, because we have a few more folks there that we need to have in place for us to support our students. There are several lines that needed shoring up. We decided to have agency in this work and actually reallocate the funds. And the funds that we were going to reallocate had to come from somewhere. So, we started to look at our payroll in our staffing level, which is about 80% of our budget. Now, we looked at our non-salary items as well, materials and supplies that affect the classroom. And we had several meetings over the summer with the principals, central office team, eventually, the leadership team as well. We met with the Milton Educators Association to make sure that we were walking down this path of trying to save money and potentially impact staff. And it resulted in our unique ability to look at the vacancies that we had available every time a vacancy became available and decide, do we fill this with a new teacher or new educator, or do we pause and not fill that vacancy to see if we can save money in order to reallocate it to some other line in the budget that needs it. A lot of the vacancies that we had, we had to fill. Fourth grade teacher at Tucker, fifth grade teacher at Tucker, third grade teacher at Collycott, special educator at Pierce, special educator at Collycott. I mean, everywhere that a vacancy was available that had students in front of them, that we had to fill those positions. Those were not negotiable. But there were other positions that we felt, as we reviewed the data and the service delivery, that we could pause for a year and use those dollars in other ways to support the budget, so all students have what they need for the school year. We are fortunate that we had 7.5 vacancies that we did not fill. And I'll go through the list for the folks on the table and at home. And we also had one position that we reduced, but that person who was in that role was offered another job within the district that we needed to have filled. So, the list that I'm going to give you tonight, there was no employee harmed in terms of losing their job. The one that was reduced is actually deciding whether they want to take the job that was made available to them. And that was really important to us from a human being level. Think of it as a staff member who was worried from February, March, and April about whether they had a job or not. They may have been on that list of 72 that would have been reduced, and then the override came in and they felt relieved. Coming back and letting someone know that they were going to lose their job in August would have been a horrible morale issue. It would have been just not a good way to start the year. So, we're fortunate that we were able to save $772,279 that we can reallocate in our budget. And we will continue to review our vacancies as they occur to see if we need to fill them or not throughout the year, because every dollar that we're able to reallocate to align that supports students in other ways and right back into the classroom, we feel we need to do in order to right-size our budget and get ready for FY27. With that said, I sent out a memo to all staff today, letting them know that this was taking place, that we had a meeting this morning, and we got preliminary approval through the subfinance committee to move forward with not filling these vacancies. Again, we are not reducing anybody. Everybody has a job. These are vacancies that we would have normally filled, that we're going to have to rally around and do some extra work amongst the other staff members in the Milton Public Schools to make the work happen. So, I'd like to share a memo that I sent to the school committee and the finance subcommittee and just talk a little bit about the positions that we're reducing. There are 8.5 positions that we'll be talking about. I'll read a little bit about each one of them, and this information will be posted on the website as well.
Would it be helpful to pull it up?
Please, that would be great.
Sorry. Apologies, John.
So, for the folks at home, the narrative about that will be posted, but essentially, it's the conversation that we've been having. We've had two difficult fiscal years in FY24 and 25 that have resulted in being unable to finish the year with enough money to pay our expenses. And so, this year, we're taking extraordinary steps to make sure that does not happen during FY26. So, these are the vacancies that we're not filling. It has the FTE. It has the unit that that employee belongs to. It has the savings, the rough savings. Some of these are exact numbers, and some of them are placeholders. And then it has an impact next to that. So, the first position is one that was vacated, the Director of Educational Technology. That was a Unit B administrator. The salary related to that position was roughly $140,000. This is the position that supported educational technology for teaching in the classroom. This position was essential during COVID because we were all remote or hybrid, and the skills and the technology and the applications that were needed for teachers to execute teaching and learning during that time was essential. Now that we are in a post-COVID environment, we want to reevaluate that position. This position, along with everything else on this list, will be reevaluated during the FY27 discussion and potentially put back in place next year. But this gives us a chance to pause, save some money, and reevaluate whether we need that position in the same way it was existing prior, or maybe shape it different for the future. So, it gives us an opportunity. We do know that teachers will be looking to have questions answered by this role that was in place by A.J. Melanson, who did a fantastic job. And we are working on some workarounds and looking to get some support from folks in order to make sure that teachers still get what they need at a certain level, but maybe not at the high level that they got in previous years. The Equity Coach resigned from Milton Public Schools to go to another school district. This individual and colleague was with the district, I think, four or five years, did a wonderful job working with teachers in the classroom around areas of inclusion in bias training, in supporting students of color and all students in our DEIB community, and educating teachers on how best to approach the work and move it forward in the classroom. When they left, we had a great exit interview, actually, with the Director of Technology and with the Equity Coach. What do we need to continue to do? How would not filling this position impact your staff? We had a good hour of conversation with Dr. F.A. Shavers, myself, and the individual. We do believe that we're going to restructure our DEI work this year to focus more on hiring, retaining, and recruiting staff of color. We've already made efforts in there to recruit and engage with a new recruitment and retention nonprofit group based right out of Boston called The Teachers Lounge, and we'll be looking to do some equity and bias training for our staff in Milton Public Schools who do the hiring. We really need to check our bias at the door. We really need to be thoughtful about how we approach hiring if we want to increase the diversity in our schools. And I think we actually have to have everybody go through some training to highlight what are some of the subtleties and some of the really clear and tenfold things that we need to do in order to have a pool of people who want to come to Milton who are diverse, so that we can interview folks and use questions and get feedback in a way that is, you know, appropriate for all of our staff, especially our diverse cadences. And that will lead to higher numbers of folks that will be in our schools. We also want to do a good job with the staff we have and retain them. The best recruiter for a new teacher of color is an existing teacher of color. So, we have to look on retaining. That's how The Teachers' Lounge that we are now engaging with, that's their big cell, is that they provide space for teachers to be able to go and talk and discuss how they're doing in their district. And so, we feel like we're trying to attack this from a couple of different ways. The other main goal of Dr. Shavers and the Equity Department is to focus on some policies that we really wanted to get into. What are some policies that we feel need to be revisited in order to make sure that we thought through the policies, through the lens of our community of people of color and our DEIB community? So, those will be the two highlights for the year. And we feel like we can pause the coach, and then when we get a better idea of what that goal will be for the following year, we can decide whether we bring that position back or something else like that to support our community. The Milton High School Team Chair, we currently have two team chairs at the high school, two team chairs at the middle school, and this person resigned to go to another district. We are now going to reorganize those three remaining team chairs at the middle school and high school to work across the grades six through 12. We're going to have one of those folks work directly with that grade eight to nine transition, which we think all transitions need to be handled very uniquely by our team chairs. Preschool to kindergarten is a unique transition year for us students and IEPs, and making sure those IEPs reflect what the shift in teaching and learning looks like from pre-K to K, from grades five to grade six. That's a different learning environment, elementary school to middle, and obviously, middle to high school. So, this is not only an opportunity to look at how we organize this work differently, but it might yield some good results in how we make those transitions work that can inform how we organize our team chairs in the rest of the district over the next few years. The nurse that we have, we have a float nurse in the district. We have nine nurses in the Milton Public Schools, one nurse per building, which equals six, two float nurses that work throughout the district every day that are not assigned to a school, and a nurse director. Again, like the educational technology, our nursing department did incredible work during COVID. We could have not have gotten by without that team of highly skilled medical professionals in the district. Now that we are moving towards a more post-COVID environment, we feel like we can do with one less float nurse. That individual will be offered a job with a student who needs a full-time nurse in the district, so we do have a place for them to go. So, that individual will be made whole if they decide to stay in Milton Public Schools. But the second float nurse will be reduced to just one float nurse, which is a savings of roughly $89,000. We have a building sub at the preschool that didn't seem to work out last year. We're not filling that position for next year. There's only a few staff there that can access the daily subs and the building subs at the Cunningham and Collycott. There was a special education position at the Glover that was no longer needed, and we were thinking about moving that position up to the high school. The position became vacant when someone left and resigned. We thought we would try to create a sister program of a sub-separate program at the high school. The number of students that are going to populate that program were not really warranting a full FTE, and we felt like if we combined programs at the high school and gave them support through a adjustment counselor, because some of these students needed a therapeutic support, that that was a better learning environment for them to be able to access high school. And so, we are going to provide that service delivery as opposed to adding another class. So, those students will be in a program at Milton High in a classroom that will be supported by two teachers, one paraprofessional, and an adjustment counselor. So, we feel like there's plenty of support for those folks to be able to be at Milton High and have their IEPs met during the school year. Again, that special education position was at the Glover, and it was vacated, and they did not need that at the Glover. The custodian and overtime budget will be reduced by $30,000. We believe that we can make that reduction because we have been understaffed for several months, and the overtime was needed in order to clean the buildings. Those two positions have been posted, and we really felt it was important to have our custodial department be at full staff instead of not filling one of those vacancies, because it's an important role. And if we are full staff, we think that our overtime budget will be able to take some of what of a financial reduction, because we're fully staffed and we no longer need as much overtime. So, I want to thank Katie for doing that analysis between, do we not fill one of the vacancies and take that dollar amount and have that be the savings, or do we want to have a full staff, make sure our schools are clean, and then do the analysis of overtime? So, we're very fortunate to think that we're going to have that $30,000 to add to that total as well. The Assistant Director of Student Services is a position that was based at Central Office to work with Danielle Wetmore, the Director of Student Services. That position was vacated during the school year, early in the fall, and has since been vacant. We posted the job. We had a search for the role, and in the end, we decided not to fill it. And this pauses a little bit for us to really take stock in, you know, was that a good decision or not? Our Special Ed and Student Service Department is one of the most important departments in the district. They handle our most vulnerable populations of students and our students who need the most care. But when we looked at the workload that Danielle Wetmore, as the Director, had, over the last two years, she was not only the Director of Student Services, she was also took on the registration role for the district. She took on the residency role for the district. She took on EL for the district. She took on nursing for the district in guidance. So, part of the rationale of being able to go without this position and maybe fill it at the following year was to redistribute some of those other tasks that she's responsible for and realign those to other folks in the district. So, we are taking the residency role from her. We are taking the enrollment and registration role from her. We are giving her support for the EL at the elementary and the secondary level, and we're working on how we may be able to reorganize the nursing department and maybe have that come under someone else. Our sole goal is to give her everything that she needs to be successful this year, because it's such a vital role to the district. So, we've made some accommodations on the other side of that. So, we appreciate Danielle's willingness to have that role not filled, and it was a significant savings to the district. Getting down to the speech pathologist, we had originally had a 1.0 speech pathologist resign. In looking at the caseload across the elementary schools, we feel that we only need to post and hire a .5 as opposed to a full-time position. That savings would be about $49,675. We do have enough staff on hand in order to meet the needs of our students who have speech in their service delivery. And keep in mind that folks like speech pathologist, OT, physical therapists, et cetera, are really able to go across the district and meet the needs across schools. They're not just school-based. They're need-based. So, if we need to redistribute folks in the district already for speech or any other service delivery, we'll do that. And if we need to add to that .5 at any time during the year, because the service delivery numbers go up, we would come back to the school committee and ask for permission to make that, make an increase in that person's FTE. Ironically, the person was not interested in a full-time job and is very happy to have the .5 job. So, we got a high-level, high-quality individual, because it was a half-time job. So, right now, that feels like a good win for the district and a savings as well. Lastly, there was a French building sub that also didn't finish the school year, left in the middle of the year. With that position being vacated, the building subs in the schools and also the daily sub pool would continue to be the support mechanism when a teacher in the French program is out, just like a teacher in the English program. The downside of that is that the building sub in French is a really great bullpen to hire someone who might not be certified but speaks French and wants to get into the world of education and can be working in the schools, and we can get to know them, and they can get to know the quality of the program and help them get certified. So, we always have another person getting ready to be available. It is hard to recruit and retain our French immersion staff. It's a very unique program. So, we would absolutely rethink that position for the FY27 budget, because it provides layers of good things to the district other than just being a substitute teacher. So, those 8.5 positions have totaled $772,279 that, in meeting with Katie over the course of the summer, in trying to get comfortable with what amount of money would we need in order to redistribute across the budget lines and have definite and have deficits, this is a very good start. This is also the shift in culture that we don't always have to ask for more, that we can actually look within our budget in order to redistribute and rethink how we want to prioritize what we need for students and how we want to deploy the resources towards what is best for students each year. So I think this is a good exercise that we want to be thoughtful about as we get ready for FY27. These dollars do not go back to the town. These dollars stay in the school budget, and these positions will stay in the school budget just unfilled, and they'll all be in discussion when we do the FY27 budget work. And quite frankly, that budget work for FY27 will provide a lot more time for community and stakeholder engagement and feedback. This was an unusual and unprecedented step in order to make the budget reduced in a way that made, would assure us to be successful. Normally, these kinds of reductions in not filling positions would be a larger conversation with the school committee, a larger conversation with our staff and with the school community. So we promise that conversation will happen for FY27, and I would not be surprised if some of the positions on this list will be back on our faculty and staff for the FY27 year. So I want to thank Katie. I want to let you know that a lot of Assistant Superintendent for Finance are really good at the finance part of the work, but Katie's ability to sit in all these meetings and also be an educator and speak to the front of the house and the back of the house when it comes to the budget and understand the need and the value of the positions that we were filling and not filling and being a strategic member of that group was very helpful because then when we're trying to do the, the budget in a way that's, we know that we have someone in charge of the budget that not only knows the numbers, but also understands the value of each of the positions that we're talking about. So the ability to have someone of Katie's skill set not only as a businessperson, but as a, as an educational lens into the work and the leadership team has been very helpful. So thank you, Katie, for that work.
Great, thank you. Anything, not to put you on the spot, okay.
No.
Again, really appreciate it, John, and for other members who weren't there at the Finance Committee meeting this morning. Again, this is a lot, a lot of what we talked about. Appreciate John walking through. I want to just name, really appreciate the detail with which, John, you can speak to these matters and like the getting in the weeds. I've always really appreciated about Katie and how, as you've said, she like helps bring us along and educates us about these things, but I really appreciate you leading on this both with like the impact to kids and the impact to staff and thinking about that as we ensure financial stability, as you've talked about. I did just want to like highlight one thing you mentioned at the start, which is like we were doing this to shore up line items. I can see some people saying like, isn't that what the override was for? I just want to highlight that that is what the override was for. Katie obviously used within the budget planning process, all of us were, you know, that was started in February to kind of plan that based upon that identified line items and things like that of what we needed. And so what we said at that point, and again, Katie said, let us through this, is we're going to need to come back to that after we see exactly how the year ends out to, to ensure that our assumptions in F, in February were the right ones, see where we were off and fix that so that we start the year on a really strong basis. So again, stating again, glad we're having this conversation now and able to strengthen these accounts to feel good about going into the rest of this year. Just on a side note too, personal, and I appreciate the statement around the Teachers' Lounge Partnership. It's a great organization. I know we work with them at our school. Devin Morris is the founder. I know him. He's an exceptional guy and has become really a leader in this area and in the Boston surrounding area. So really excited that we're partnering with them for that recruitment and hiring retention work. Any other points about that discussion that any of the other Finance Committee members want to?
Well, there are two things I'd like to say. One is I appreciate the explanation around a couple of things. One is with respect to the, the DEIB work and the fact that, that there's, that it's not, we're not saying that this work is being, that we're not doing the work, that the focus, talking about where the focus is with respect to the hiring and, and that it's, that that's still very much a priority and looking really at what the strategies will be and the focus would be in the coming years. So I think that that's important to know, that that is still very much a focus. I think the other thing that I found very helpful, excuse me, and refreshing is, you know, when we've gone through this and you've shared, you have that great big spreadsheet where there, you know, especially when you look at positions like a speech pathologist or you look at even like the team chair or some of those roles, recognizing that having a sense of what their caseload is and recognize, and matching those services to the IEP. I mean, I think it's a level of work that needs to be done that isn't always necessarily done. So seeing all of the work that you did, I feel, you know, it makes me feel a lot more confident that we aren't removing people or services from students who need them. And that's, that's, that's definitely reassuring. And also the philosophy around the team chairs, I think that makes a lot of sense with those transition periods. I think that sometimes those are areas where kids get lost when it's that handoff from eighth to ninth or fifth to sixth or K to, pre-K to K. So I like the fact, or I appreciate, I should say, the fact that there was a strategic lens to it as well, recognizing what positions weren't being refilled this year. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And the only, I'd add a couple of minor things. I first just really appreciate the transparency in this effort from both of you, both on the process that you went through with your leadership team and that what you're doing with the school committee today and with the public, there are no secrets in what's happening here, which is, which is really, really great. The second thought I have is just, you know, the, the budget reallocation that you're proposing here represents about 1% of the total school budget, which 1% is not that much, but when almost your entire budget is fixed costs that can't be realigned, this is actually an enormous amount of money to free up and put toward budget lines that are at risk. So I think it's a lot of really smart moves here. These moves are not without risk, and you've been transparent about what that risk could look like, but I think in order to get the, the budget, this year's budget in the right place, it's worth the risk. So thank you both.
You're welcome.
And to share from a process perspective, what we are doing right now is again, looking at the staffing, as John said, the positions we're not going to refill, and the school department is looking for kind of the school committee to vote to support this direction. We are going to need to come back after the quarter one where Katie and John will identify where the money is going to be reallocated in terms of the specific line items. We're not voting on that today, so that, that reallocation will need to be voted on by school committee. But what I think the, they brought to us at Finance Committee and we voted unanimously dis support it at Finance Committee is just ensuring that the school committee is kind of aligned on this as a direction specifically around these positions being unfilled. And again, mostly I think John's urgency was ensuring we're doing that before the start of the year because then that obviously affects staff more and that affects kids more. And so that's, those are the kind of two steps we'll be taking. Any questions, any members have further on this? If not, oh, please.
I was just going to say, I appreciated the opportunity to listen in and participate in the discussion this morning, and I don't want to say more than needed, it's already been said, but I think this approach is, it is what we need right now, and I just am thankful for the thoughtfulness because there are so many implications for each one of these decisions. And I think it, you know, I'm really looking forward to the FY27 budget process where we will be able to continue considering these implications. But I appreciate your naming so clearly, you know, what your process was, your thought process, and looking for all those sort of win-wins, ways to save the money that we need to save in the short term while mitigating a harmful impact or at least opening up an opportunity to sort of think outside the box in a way that could overall, you know, even enhance the, you know, what that department or, or even position might be able to contribute starting in, you know, in a future year. So I think the messaging around we're pausing these is, is important for the community to understand that that is what's happening rather than the reductions, rather than the things you explained. But just having, you know, been here over these past few years of really challenging times, I think I can't overstate how important it feels to be doing this at this point in the year. And it's been a lot of work over the summer while some of us were able to actually take a little bit of a, you know, a breath, but thank you for all of that work.
Can I just add one thing? Want to thank the Milton Public Schools faculty and staff who I reached out to and gave the letter today to the entire staff, and I identified every single position to be very, very clear. And as we said, that there, there will be folks sharing some work to share. So I don't want to minimize the fact that there might be things that we're all lifting up and trying to do and share across that. So I appreciate the, the staff, you know, listening to that tonight and reading the memo. And then for further communication and clarity, I will be sending a letter to all families. And so that communication and the website for the Finance Committee will be, is up and running by this week. Thanks to Stephanie O'Keefe, and all these documents will be proactively posted there for folks to review as well.
Sorry, can I add one other thing? And I think it was an important thing that we talked about, which is, this is being done for, I think for a couple of reasons. One is that you talked about the, the areas where they're, they're budget line items where they're, where they might be underfunded, but I think recognizing that we don't have any reserve funds within Circuit Breaker, that we have zero buffer should students come in who require more services or are referred for special education or require an out-of-district placement, that, that those can, you know, a couple of students that, or, and this isn't to put it on the special education, more that special education is the most, the one area where there is the most, as we talked about earlier, the most ebb and flow. And so to be able to know that we have resources in place to support those students that don't and without trying to figure out where to take it from in other parts of the budget, I think is really important just because we use those reserves in the past. So I think that that's a, that is a huge piece that, that we need to, that I'm grateful that we're, that we're looking at and that, that could have a real budget impact if we weren't looking ahead like this. So.
Any other questions or comments? I will make a motion, a motion to support the direction of the school department's plan for FY26 budget realignment as presented tonight in this memo.
Second.
Great. All in favor? Thank you very much. Again, thank you, Katie. Thank you, John, for your work on that. Next item for Finance is the, the Joint Budget Committee. And so what's it been called? The Tri-Board Budget Coordination Committee. I believe it's called the Budget Coordination Committee is the final name, but essentially it's what we've talked about through the kind of override process and mentioned it's established by the Select Board. They've established it, they've appointed their two members. It's actually the two members of their Finance Committee are on it. They've also appointed a member of the public. We have two members that we can appoint and a member, a large member from the public. So those are votes that we need to take and appoint to that committee as we do other committees. The, it is online for residents to, to look at, for us to look at on the town website as information on like what the committee is and the members. So the Planning Board also has a member, Warrant Committees also have a member, and they have all, at this point, I believe, voted. So we, as a school committee, need to vote to appoint. Discuss who, there's no requirement that it be Finance. I think that's been kind of my thoughts, given it's a Finance Committee-related board, but I think that's something we, we should talk through of like who, who we think are the right people to appoint as school committee members.
And what is the process for identifying the designee?
They've opened up a place where you can apply to it for, or for that position, I should say. And I reached out to Nick Malano, he is on vacation this week, but to see if they've gotten applications for the resident designee. So once we have that, then I think we would go through a similar.
And maybe with the Climate Action, that's like a similar process, so we could look at those together.
Yeah, it's a good flag though, for anybody who's watching or listening to this, those, the ability to apply for these committees is on the town website. So please go and apply for, again, the two we get to appoint is Climate Action and this one, we have some designees we can appoint. So if you are interested, please apply.
I'll, I'll jump in. I, you know, I think you, similar to what you said, it seems like it would be good, you know, similar to the other boards having members from the Finance Committee be members of this Budget Coordination Committee. So I don't know if anybody has other thoughts around that. I think just because you're in all of the meetings and you're, you know, reviewing all the budget documents, et cetera, it's not, nobody else really has to get up to speed if they're not able to participate or attend the Finance Subcommittee meetings. So to that end, I would, I would be nominating Mark and Nathan, assuming that people agree that they were Finance Subcommittee members.
Yeah, I think, I think Mark and Nathan would be great candidates for this.
Yeah.
These will be public meetings, so anybody can attend who would like to, and obviously anything discussed that would be brought back to Finance Committee, which is cross-posted and would be brought back here. Reminder that this committee has no voting authority, policy, passing authority. It's merely to share information, ask questions, and then bring that back to the voting authority, which would be, in our case, the school committee as a whole.
And I don't know if this changed, but I know in the last document that I read, they were talking about this would be for a one-year term, and then they would, as a committee, determine whether or not it made sense to continue forward in 2027. So it's sort of a, almost like a pilot program, if you will. So this would be for, you know, would be for a one-year term.
And it would become like a committee that reports back, I think you just said this, with a reports back at these meetings, like it would not be under the Finance Subcommittee report necessarily, but it's, it's one of our townwide committees that we serve on. So once after your monthly meeting, at the next school committee meeting, there, it would be on our agenda to hear a report? Just confirming my understanding of that?
Yeah, that makes sense, yep.
Yeah, okay. I agree, it makes sense for Finance Committee members to be on it because you're, by definition, you're informed in the, up to speed on what I presume will be discussed.
There's no concern, I will accept the nomination. Do you accept?
Yes.
So at least for the purpose of discussion, I'll make the awkward motion of, I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Loring and Nathan Hutter to the Milton Budget Coordination Committee for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Great, that is checked off. Next thing is the approval of vendor warrants. There's a lot, so we have to close out some vendor warrants from fiscal year '25 that were reviewed and signed over the summer. I believe I've sent all of those, fiscal year warrant '26, I believe I've sent three and four, are reviewed and signed six and seven today. I have not forwarded those documents, so I'll do that maybe at some point at the end of this meeting, so apologize for that, but all these have been reviewed and signed off at this point. So I will go ahead and at least. So I will go ahead and at least make the motion for discussion. If anybody has questions, we can do it there. All at once. Motion is made to approve vendor warrant 48 in the amount of $891,715.35 payable on 6/12/25. Vendor warrant 50 in the amount of $884,055.38 payable on 6/26/25. Vendor warrant 51 in the amount of $578,184.49 payable on 6/27/25. Vendor warrant 52 in the amount of $186,020.20 payable on 6/30/25. For fiscal year 26, approving vendor warrant three in the amount of $83,466.7 payable on 7/10/25. Vendor warrant four in the amount of $203,836.2 payable on 7/31/25. Vendor warrant six in the amount of $542,239.44 payable on 8/14/25. And vendor warrant seven in the amount of $576,583.12 payable on 8/21/25. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's the vendor warrants. I believe that's everything for finance.
Yeah, so the school building, school building committee report.
Oh, yeah. All right.
We should break these up, something in between for you.
I'm sorry, I talked too long. School building committee, we met a couple of weeks ago, have, I think, and apologize with our, I'm not sure if we've talked about this in open school committee meeting at this point, but school building committee, primary thing we were able to kind of talk about at last meeting is, one, we are through module one of the school MSBA process, we've completed all those steps, submitted them to the MSBA, we're, MSBA is reviewing, we're waiting on their kind of sign-off and formal moving us into step two. We were supposed to have 180 days to complete that. We did it in much, much less time than that because it started in May and we've completed it by early July 31st. So I think that's like around 90 days. So that's great. Really appreciative of every member of that committee, kind of pushed that along and all the work John and Katie did to kind of get some documents together with Tom and principals, things like that. So thank you. Other thing that was discussed at school committee, school building committee, and I forwarded it to y'all, is the warrant article that school building committee reviewed related to changing the reverter clause in the land swap. So just for the background, the land swap legislation around the land identified for the school building project back in, was it 2023, I believe, Springtown meeting in 2023, that was passed. It had a five-year reverter clause at that point, saying if the school building project construction did not begin within five years, the land would revert back so that it was not just kept in perpetuity and was put back into conservation if it wasn't to be used. We were moving on a good timeline for that through kind of the school building committee process until we hit the acceptance into MSBA. It's obviously great news because that means some funding for the town. The downside was it meant the process slowed, was delayed kind of significantly. We've had to slow down and obviously are just module one. So the concern is based upon kind of the best timelines as Sean has laid out for the committee, is that going through the MSBA process within their timeline, that it's going to run us right up against that five-year reverter clause. And I think the idea is then to say that, you know, the intent of the reverter clause is to ensure that the project doesn't die and it just, the land sits kind of unused. And so given that we are in the MSBA and that's now dragging out a little bit longer is to extend that reverter clause, not remove it, but just extend it. And the plan, the plan presented was just to extend it another five years, given that was the original amount. And so that was a vendor warrant article that was proposed, school building committee reviewed that, voted unanimously to approve it, to move it forward with the warrant committee. Sean and myself will be in front of warrant committee on Monday discussing that warrant article as a part of the fall town meeting in October. So that is something that we should discuss from a school committee perspective, is not a warrant, but given it's related to the school building project, typically we have discussed any warrant articles related to that and voted to either lend our support or not. That's typically something that town meeting likes to hear from the school committee, our stance on a school building committee warrant article. So we don't have a vote on that tonight, we'll have a vote on that at a future meeting, but wanted to at least begin the discussion, see if there are any questions, comments, concerns. If we really need to, I could probably ask Sean to come here, but otherwise I can also kind of gather information, Nathan and I can gather some stuff and try and answer it and bring it back to y'all. But if the committee would really like to, I'm sure Sean wouldn't mind, he's always amenable. Anything I missed from that?
No, very thorough.
Any questions folks have on that warrant article? And I've sent the language to everybody, so if you haven't had time to read through it.
You can.
Anything comes up, let us know. But that is, that's the only change. It's essentially the language is a little bit long because it's, I think, most the same language from the original warrant article, but just that timeline has been adjusted. Those are the primary things from the school building committee. There's some other things we're working on related to enrollment projections and things that we expect that MSBA is going to need as we continue to move through their process. The module two is where we start actually being able to rebuild the construction team essentially, with the architect and the OPM, things like that. So that is really, after that module is when we'll have kind of the team back that we had before we got into MSBA, start re-looking at the designs of the project and that kicks off in more earnestness. That is it for the school building committee unless there are any questions.
Is the feasibility, there's a feasibility study piece of that, is that going on? When it, what module is that?
So it'd be module three. Once we get the design team, then when we get to module three, we start looking at the designs again. And so we'll look at, obviously, based upon the proposals we put towards MSBA, that was accepted by MSBA, we'll look at the upper middle school design as we have, we'll need to look at an elementary school, additional elementary school design as the committee did before I joined, but we'll need to do that again through the MSBA and potentially some other things that we can look at as well. So MSBA will kind of walk us through and say exactly here are the different things you'll need to study and produce a report on and then ultimately share that to say this is why we are wanting to move forward with this type of project based upon kind of the studies we've done.
Thank you.
When are we going to hear back from LSDA about this first phase?
It's a good question. I'm not sure. Again, we've completed like well in advance of the allowable timeline. We're still trying to move other work forward that we know they are going to be needing to not totally pause, but I think we expect to hear in the next month or so, but it's, yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. So I can also follow up with Sean, I know he's like reaching out to them, connecting with them, they connect with Nick and maybe with John, I'm not sure. And so try and figure out if we've heard anything and have a better timeline for our next meeting.
I think it happens through their board meetings, right? So the approval will happen at the next board meeting?
There you go.
Which I don't know when that is, but that's when, that's the milestone.
Their board, their board meetings?
The MSBA board meeting, they'll review the, they'll review our, our work, our submission for phase one and then vote hide, I assume.
Next meeting is scheduled for August 27th, so. We'll see if they discuss and discuss us.
They probably won't discuss it until the 180 days deadline.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't need to wait the 180 days.
Anything else?
That's it for.
So the next thing is agenda items for the next meeting. I would like to follow up with the MASC around the discussion around extending the, looking at second term for the, for your role, for the superintendent role. So reaching out to them. We're trading emails and looking at that and just to see, have them come in and address any questions. Kind of further discussion around that. Is there anything else that people have coming out of this meeting that we want to include? Obviously we'll have an agenda meeting, but if there's something coming out of this that we want follow-up on or?
We'll have a finance committee meeting. Before that, we will not have a school building committee meeting. We should have a further discussion on the warrant article, the committee, and potentially hold a vote in case the committee is ready to vote on that.
We might possibly have, depending on what Nick says, there might be a vote, there could conceivably be a vote on the, on the community designee.
Do we need to speak with them live here or just review?
I have to look at that.
For the designee?
Yeah.
We didn't for at least, I guess we probably could, but for climate action, when we appointed that person, we just reviewed and then discussed the different resumes that were submitted and made a point.
I think there was a process, maybe you can share, there might be a process of like independent review and sharing top candidates to Amanda.
No, we don't need till the 15th.
So we'll be looking at our goals. Talk about reaffirming the members at the start of the, because of members from the community that are on facilities. Because I know we haven't done that process, so I don't really know if that's done here at a meeting to reaffirm the members of facilities. Or does, does that just happen at the facilities advisory meeting?
Shouldn't.
It would be here.
Like anybody else, any other committee.
Yeah, it would be here.
Okay. Any other subcommittee? Will you be, no, you wouldn't have had any, the plan, you guys, the, oh my gosh, procedure, the?
Policy.
Policy, thank you, that's the word I'm thinking.
That's also on the 15th.
That's on the 15th, okay.
Yeah, well, I was just, so at our next meeting, we'll be looking at our goals that we drafted.
Yes. If, yeah. Okay. That's it, great. I think that is everything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Great. May adjourn, thank you everyone.